... designated for low-density residential projects subject to the general plan, specifically, the land use element table 2.1 identifies the target density for low-density residential projects as being 3.5 units per acre. This is identified in a footnote in that table that that figure, 3.5 units per acre, was used in the traffic model that was done for the general plan environmental impact report referencing a worst-case scenario for the development of the project. At 4.3 units per acre, the project exceeds that worst-case analysis that was reviewed under the traffic model for the environmental impact report, traffic model. Therefore, again, a traffic impact analysis should be required before the planning commission takes any action on the SEQA for this project. Circulation element, goal number, our policy number C 1.17 requires traffic analyses. It states that evaluate development proposals for potential impacts of the transportation and infrastructure system. The traffic analysis should discuss the need for both ultimate and interim improvements resulting from the development proposal. No traffic impact study has been prepared. I don't want to go through similar comments that other people have made. I do have all of my concerns expressed in my letter to you. I'm available to the planning commission or staff at any time to answer any questions regarding the content of my letter. I would just like to state that I think any action to approve this project this evening would be premature and you would be remiss because you cannot make all of the required findings that must be made to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pettie.
Appreciate your patience tonight. I have sent a letter earlier. I do want to clarify some comments initially and then talk more in specifics. My letter of June 1st, 2020 to the commission details my specific objections, but I can't let this public hearing go on without raising some objections as to what's been said by D.R. Horton. I anticipated this, so I did make a copy, which I'd like to present to the commission, of my correspondence with the city of Hemet regarding Lot 48. I'm the original developer of the project. When the recession hit, the project did go dormant. I wound up my partnership with the joint venture partners. But the Lot 48 situation was part and parcel of the original approvals, and I'm at a loss to understand why the city attorney hasn't jumped in here because there's definitely a SEQA issue. The mitigation of that scenic highway setback was absolutely part of the mitigated NEG deck that was adopted back in 2003. If D.R. Horton does not have that scenic highway setback property, then I don't see how there can be a finding of consistency with the underlying mitigated NEG deck. So there's some fundamental things that I must say, you know, the most of you know the value and integrity of Chuck Hendrick's work. Mr. Pap, I don't think he mentioned that he was a planner at the city of Hemet for a few years. You have two of the best planners that this city has ever seen give you thousands of dollars of work that quite honestly Hemet City staff should have done. And ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't know you, the Hemet City Attorney has not weighed in on this project like it should have. And if this has to come up at an appeal or in litigation, so be it. But this project is so deficient in what it has been allowed to present here and what planning staff has been allowed to present here, I'm embarrassed for the city of Hemet. I have an email from a Nelson Miller that was sent to me on January 9th, 2020. Says, "John, it appears you're the owner of the 25-foot wide lot along Florida Avenue." Ta-da, ta-da, ta-da. Would you be willing to dedicate this lot to the city of Hemet so that we may pursue improvement of the lot with landscaping and sidewalk improvements?" I responded, January 14th, "Thanks, Nelson. I believe that you were referring to the letter lots, which for whatever reason were not included in the deed prepared by the current owner when we wrapped up our partnership several years ago. I certainly would be willing to discuss such a conveyance. Not sure whether the city of Hemet would want to receive title, given that the owner developer is charged with a condition to construct both the decorative block wall as well as the landscaping, irrigation, and planting improvements. Happy to meet and discuss at a mutually convenient time. Please advise." I never heard anything from anybody after that. This comment about how I was supposedly contacted by D.R. Horton or Horton's representatives completely false. There's been no communication from D.R. Horton to me. I had to finally send a registered letter to them because they illegally trespassed and constructed a temporary fence on that 25-foot landscape setback. They removed it shortly thereafter. But there's been a tremendous amount of misrepresentation here. And if D.R. Horton says they've reached out to me, or the city of Hemet says they've reached out to me, other than the one email that I just read you, bring it on. Where is it? HP, where is it? Because in this waiver that council approved back in February 25th, and this was HP's memo to honorable members of the city council, it says, "D.R. Horton was unable to secure dedication of Lot 48. However, staff contacted John Pettie, who indicated his willingness to dedicate Lot 48. This will enable construction of improvements along Florida Avenue." Really? It's a lie, and I really resent it. And if D.R. Horton's lying about this, and staff is lying about this, you can imagine the other things that are in a public records request, by the way, that we made more than 10 days ago, that the city still hasn't fulfilled, detailing all of the things that have gone on behind the scenes here. This fair share business, did anybody decide ever to maybe pick up the phone and say, "Gee, we've got an idea about a fair share scheme about the 27 lots that I own"? Nothing in the conditions of approval say anything about my obligation to build anything on Florida Avenue. I mean, it is totally amazing to me what has gone on with this project. Jack remains, as in my original letter, I said, "This is a fairly easy case to decipher." And commissioners, I speak to you as someone who is the third district planning commissioner for 17 years for the County Riverside. I've sat through hundreds of hours and approved thousands of homes, and I can tell you, not only is this project not ready for this commission tonight, it is absolutely incompatible with the neighborhood, and it would be a first-year student at Cal Poly in the planning department to walk out on that neighborhood and see what they're proposing versus what's in the neighborhood and say, "Com compatible? Give me a break." Not even close. This business about, I mean, Mr. Boyd's tap dancing up here as fast as he can, there's no market for single-story homes? You heard Carrie tell you, and I can tell you right now, I get realtors reaching out to me all the time, "When are you going to build those 27 lots?". And that's a continuation of the existing neighborhood, by the way. So not only would you have the existing 110, you'd have 27 more that are built just like those 110. So you'll have 137 homes that are all single-story, as true as arts and crafts as I could do. And absolutely, there's a market for that home, and for D.R. Horton to say, "This is our market and we know the market. Mr. Pap told you, staff has told you, this property is trump exempt." That means they're saving almost $10,000 per home. Give me a break. They can afford to do something other than their cookie cutter standardized format that they guarantee you they're not going to want to do. And there's still plenty of profit in this deal. It just needs to be made compatible with the existing neighborhood. And I detailed the design elements that would make it compatible. And one other comment about this, I've asked about Hemet domain. I'm going to be fascinated to see, when we finally do get the results of the public record request, which one suggested it first? I was hypothetically suggesting that the only way that D.R. Horton's going to be able to be in compliance with its SEQA responsibilities under the mitigated NEG deck that was done for these two tracks, track 31620-1 and the base map, is that somebody, and notice that D.R., HP or D.R. Horton didn't say anything about what happens on the scenic highway setback. The sidewalk should be a meandering sidewalk. The reason why HP said, "Oh, no, it's going to be a straight line", is because they know they can't get encroachment into the 25-foot setback because I own it. So they're going to sacrifice the look of a highway scenic setback because of this mess. D.R. Horton, as sophisticated and beautiful and the biggest home builder in the world, is going to tell you they're so great, they blew it. They closed ESCO on those 80 lots in December. Their eyes were wide open. As soon as I heard about D.R. Horton, I said, "You know, they're going to have to go through a process to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood." They knew this months ago. They're betting on a city who is desperate to vote for development, for a commission and a staff, they think they can steamroll, they have steamrolled the staff. I hope they don't steamroll the commission. I sure as heck hope they don't steamroll the council if we have to appeal. Commissioners, this is a no-brainer. Don't get misdirected by Mr. Boyd's tap dancing. It's all about making the new homes compatible with the existing neighborhood and figuring out what's the right thing to do on the scenic highway setback. I said at our neighborhood meeting, if D.R. Horton wants to come in and do single-story and make it, yeah, they're going to have to hire an architect, and it's going to have to be something where it's going to be compatible, it's not going to be their cookie cutter. If they'll do that, I'll sign the grant deed on the scenic highway setback tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pettie, can I ask you a question? Because it'll help me understand, and I think help a lot of people understand. So if you still own the 80 lots and still own-
27.
No, if you still own the 80 lots-
Oh, if I still-
That we're talking about, them building, and own Lot 48, what would you do?
Continue the same project. The vision of that project was always exactly what you see.
So your lots would be shorter in the back to allow for more of an offset on the scenic highway?
No, there's no, no. It was designed with the scenic highway setback. Those lots are exactly what they are.
Okay, so what's the difference between what they're proposing and building just the existing homes that you built? That's what I'm not understanding.
Well, first of all, I should have made this point. No planner, again, some first-year person at Cal Poly would say, "Who would ever think about building two-story product on 1,800 lineal feet of Florida Avenue frontage that backs up the Florida Avenue? Who would build any two-story product? That's horrible planning. No one would do that." And this mentioning in the staff report of Four Seasons, the Almanian project, I can't. There's a 138-foot setback from Florida Avenue. And for that to be mentioned in the staff report is embarrassing. And I don't know if I answered your question, but I mean, ask it again and let me try.
So assuming that the 20, 30 lots that back to Florida will be a third single-story, the other two-thirds will be two-story, what's your, what would you have done different other than those being single-story homes? So you're saying what they're doing wrong is that they're having windows that are going to look onto Florida? That's the, that's the problem with it?
No, they were designed for all single stories, so-
The lots wouldn't be any different, correct?
Correct.
Lot 48 would be the same size, the lots adjacent to it would all be the same size?
That is correct.
They'd just have single stories?
That's right.
So how does that affect the setback?
It doesn't.
Okay.
I'm sorry if that was, if you were confused that there was something about the setback that you thought changed.
No, I just wanted to know why, same why, I mean, if someone's willing to buy a two-story that has the second story that faces Florida, who's to stop them?
Well, you could-
You may not want to do that.
You could take that to a logical extension to the absurdity, but I just think the city of Hemet should have a better sense of planning, and no jurisdiction that I am familiar with, including one that I'm intimately familiar with, would have allowed two-story product to be built against a major arterial with a scenic highway setback.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, thanks. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Anybody on the teleconference? Any emails? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Sorry, Stephanie?
Sorry, we do have to allow the applicant if he would like to re-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Right, we'll open the public hearing. Yes, sir, you'd like to rebut? Yes, I'm sure. Please welcome back to the podium, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you for allowing me to respond to the comments.
Of course.
It's not on.
Okay, there we go. Now we're here. I appreciate, Mr. Chair, members of the commission allowing me to respond again to the comments made for the past few minutes. I want to first reiterate that the project is approved. It's been approved, it's a final map. So the nuances of what's good, bad, or indifferent about the map is irrelevant from the standpoint the map's approved. Number two, what's relevant is the city has design guidelines, general plan, and zoning requirements, and the staff is discharged with responsibility to report to you to determine as to whether or not the project is compatible. Planning commissions rely upon staffs for that analysis. You've heard in your staff report that it is compatible and is consistent. Any questions the contrary, those questions should be directed to your planning director, but your staff report speaks very clearly to that. With regards to fencing, it seems that the fencing is a paramount concern with the community and fencing should be. So the reason why we're hesitant, because the homeowners have improvements made on their private backyards, taking down the cedar fence, which admittedly has been there for many years, would invariably create liability back to Horton for repairs. I think, though, however, there is a compromise that seems to make some sense, and I would share that we would agree to a condition of approval to work with removal of that cedar fence and putting up our vinyl fence, but would have to be protected from the homeowner from any damages done to their property. We can discuss that condition, but I would be willing to make that compromise to come closer to the concerns of the community with respect to that issue. The comment made with the lack of streetlights, fire stations, circulation, and those kinds of things are really city issues that need to be dealt with, not at a project level, but probably at a city level in terms of fire service and fire response times. But I'd like to speak back to the approved project and the circulation. The project was approved with what we see before us today, and the original impact analysis that was done then for the SEQA determination included the same number of lots that obviously hasn't changed as a result of this architectural approval. So I beg to differ that there has been no dismissal of any mitigation measure with respect to the approval of this architectural approval, and HP can further exasperate that. Staff can also exasperate that they did a complete analysis review to determine and make sure that this architectural approval did not impinge upon any sacrifices of the original SEQA determination. We would then like to move forward, and I think that the, again, the issue of the single-story versus the two-story, this is an issue that if we were asking for the commission's variance and asked them to consider something other than what's permitted, that would be a big decision tonight, but that's not what we're asking for. We have an approved recorded map, we've got documentation from the city that allows D.R. Horton to propose what they have. You've had a staff review that's prepared, analysis on a staff report that confirms that the project being proposed is compliant and consistent to those documents. Everyone has a different viewpoint. I don't think we could ever get consensus and everyone to agree on one thing, and obviously this may be one of those issues. But I'll tell you that the architecture 20 years ago is very different from the architecture today. I had never said that I thought right off the beginning that was a well-executed project, as ours will be too. You know, I appreciate Mr. Pettie's recollection of his view of the communications, but I think that we had deferred our communications to our seller, which is his former business partner, and obviously the city wanted to take the lead on those communications. I admit, and Mr. Pettie's not incorrect, we didn't pick up the phone and call Mr. Pettie because staff wanted to take a different direction in terms of communication. But it's interesting to point out, even at tonight's hearing, we're still not hearing Mr. Pettie say, "Here's Lot 48, solve the issue." Why won't he just dedicate Lot 48 to the city? That has always been the request, that's always been the long-term solution, but that isn't even tonight. We're not hearing that. So he has his motivations and his reasonings, and that's his business. What we have tonight, though, is Lot 48 is not owned by D.R. Horton, and therefore that's how the modification, how we're going to move this project forward and move forward with the conditions, and in part came with the separation of the hardscape and the soft safe improvements. Otherwise, we have a dead-center, no-go project because we can't develop on other people's property. That was the whole motivation of the staff trying to make early reach out to Mr. Pettie. I'm not privy to a copy of that email, nor am I privy to any letters that allegedly went back and forth between Mr. Pettie and staff, so I can't comment on that. The next item is the traffic impact analysis. This is an approved project. It was studied and reviewed on original approvals. The traffic impact analysis was done many years ago with the approved project. It would be an issue this evening if we were changing the number of lots, and we're not. We're keeping the number of lots consistent with the original approval, and therefore staff has reached the determination that there are no further impacts as a result of this architectural approval, and the mitigation measures remain consistent and valid today. And I'm sure HP can expand on that, on questioning when staff is asked to clarify. So the issue then is really, what are we actually asking you to do this evening? We're actually asking you to review the staff recommendation against the documentation. We're asking you to view the approved project that allows the use of second stories, and we're also asking that when we look at this project, we're looking to succeed with this project and build out the community under the guidelines of the city. You can't really judge a project outside of the guidelines. What we have to do is pay attention to the community concerns, and so in part I think we can come to some resolution on the fencing, and we can articulate what we can agree to in terms of a condition. But as far as asking for what your consideration is deserving for your architectural approval, you have to rely on your staff, and that's why we have staff, and that's why we have experts. I'm not going to sit here at all and degrade the capability of your staff. I'm not at all going to be derogatory and accusatory with your staff. I think that's rude, and I don't think that's warranted for. I think your staff is one of the best staff I've seen, and I am honored to work with your staff. And trust me, I've been working with a lot of staffs in a lot of cities for a long, long time. They've been utmost professional, very clear and articulate, and they've done an excellent job with the review. So, you know, when we look at the project in its totality, we believe that what we're proposing this evening is a good quality project, a project that's going to build out the community, but for the last 27 lots, we have the conditions of approval, and we work exclusively and carefully with staff, which ultimately led to the waiver of the undergrounding. I think we better understand how that modification occurred, and granted, there may be some confusion as to other clarifications, but it was technically part of the staff report. It was referred to in the staff report, and your city manager would affirm that. So I am basically going to open up for any different questions you have, but we're here this evening to urge your consideration to the project. We're looking forward to moving forward with the project, building out the project in conformance to the design guidelines, the standards and codes implored by the city. And frankly speaking, it is frustrating, it's a frustrating experience because we would love to have been able to clarify Lot 48, but we're not walking, that condition's not being dismissed. It's not an impediment against the SEQA mitigation measures. It's going to be satisfied. It's just going to be satisfied equitably because we don't have Lot 48. If Mr. Pettie were to say tonight, "Here's the deed, here's Lot 48 staff, it's now owned by the city", which is basically the direction that was attempted to take early on, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. But that's not the case. We purchased the property, we own it, and we looking forward to developing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Boyd, just to clarify, because there was a question earlier, there are no three stories being built in this development.
Correct, no three stories.
Just clarify that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Discussion, the commission. All right, got it, Stephanie?
A lot of things, but a couple things I wanted to, there's only, so there's nine houses that back to the new development. I counted it, I pulled up Google Maps, so there's only nine houses that back to it. I don't mean to say only, by no means, I don't mean to diminish or take away from the nine homes that live there, but there are only nine. So if the developer's willing to work with them on removal or placement of a new fencing, I think that's, you know, that's on them, and that would be, you know-
That's in those cul-de-sacs, right?
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's one, yeah, I counted it, so there's only a total of nine. So not a huge, not a huge impact as far as immediate backing to the fences, just because the way these cul-de-sacs come in.
And I do remember that there is six foot up in terms of grade-
Right.
And there are two stories in those, overlooking those houses in the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, not even to address any of that, just on the fencing aspect of it. There's only nine homes, homeowners that they would have to deal with as far as, so it's not, it wouldn't be crazy huge, you know, ask of the builder to work with them on the fencing. Another thing that was brought up, something was said about 15 feet between houses this way. The smallest setback that I see is 34 feet, 35 feet, 35 feet, 45 feet. So I mean, and it goes all the way up to 55 feet as far as the setback goes from the house to the property line, not even to the existing home. And of course, the shortest distance is the single-story ones. Single-story takes up the bigger, it's a bigger footprint, so of course it sits further back on the lot. So the single stories that are on these are going to be much closer by about 10 to 20 feet, just depending on the floor plan. Another thing that was brought up was that there's not two-story homes on scenic routes. That is not correct. In our town, there is. If you drive Sanderson, all Willowak community, all predominantly two stories, and Sanderson there is a scenic route. And there's two stories set on a scenic route that back to, I mean, you know, Sanderson's not, I think it's not a state highway, but it's- not, I think it's not a state highway, but it's a main thoroughfare, and it is a...
It is State Highway 79.
Right, well, yeah. So, yeah, and it's a scenic route. So obviously, it's been done, people live there, and it's part of the community. That's pretty much it. Yeah, I mean, everything else was, you know, addressed multiple different times, but those were things that kind of, you know, that I noted that I wanted to, you know, look at and do a little bit more digging so we'd have a little bit more information. So it's nine homes that back to it, that's it. And they, and this is what they're building, so...
So I appreciate the setback discussion. So if we're talking like 30 feet setback, is this, is this, sorry, is this new track lower than the existing, or higher than the existing? It's higher. Higher by that six?
Correct. This track is higher along that north side of Orange Grove Avenue.
It's so frustrating when I can't see when I breathe on my... So with that 35-foot setback, and then we have a six-foot fence, it'd be interesting to kind of see what that angle is relative to...
Well, 35 is on the single-stories. The two-stories range from 49, 45, 55...
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
45, 49, 45. So I mean, the ones that are closer are the single-stories, and it's just a bigger footprint. You can see it's a big difference. It's anywhere from 14 to 20 feet difference of a setback to the two-story.
So with that, with that 40-foot setback, I need to stop talking with my hands, but with that 40-foot or so setback, the six-foot fence, the difference in elevation, all those things combined, what's the line of sight from those top windows into the backyards?
It's like the drive-through at Starbucks, remember? We were trying to imagine how people coming in that drive-through on Thornton, we're gonna, you know, if their house, their high beams were gonna hit into people's phones, and we didn't want to have that happen. And it's understandable to not want to have people looking down into other people's yards, but when you purchase a home that backs up to a vacant lot, you just have to assume that you don't know what's gonna go in there. And 20 years later, the building costs are different, building materials are different, everything's more expensive, insurance is more expensive. You know, to be devil's advocate, builders now have to put solar on homes, they have to put fire sprinklers into homes. That's tens of thousands of dollars of cost that, you know, the original developer didn't have to put into these homes. So doing a single-story home is a lot more expensive to build. Two-story is a lot cheaper, so...
So just to clarify, were you suggesting that the impact would be lower because it's only nine homeowners that would be impacted? Or are you suggesting that the builder work it out to maybe they could put single-stories there? Were you going there at all?
No, just, I mean, just clarifying as far as the fencing aspect of it goes, I think that's a solid concern for the homeowners to not negatively impact them to have to go rebuild their fence or do anything. I mean, it's their fence, it's, you know, to maintain on their own. If they're not maintaining it, that's not the builder's issue. But if there's only nine homes that back up to it, they should, you know, I think it'd be fair enough to work with them to either replace or design a new one that would be functional.
But nothing to do with single-story or two-story?
Uh-uh, no.
I was, I was kind of thinking that along those lines, you know, is there an opportunity for orientation? I'm most empathetic with the folks that are going to be directly adjacent to this new development. The visual of having three people looking down on your pool...
Also crossed my mind.
Yeah, and the fencing is definitely an issue that would concern me as well, that you're gonna have to, you can't maintain it, it's wood, you know, so... The other, I'm sorry, Tiffany, were you done?
No, 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 go ahead.
If I could, I just, so a couple of other things, specifically in response to the comments about the mitigated neck deck. Have, I'm assuming we've reviewed that, and is there, is there any issue of concern with being in violation with the traffic study, being that we're at four, three units per...
No, Vice Chairman Worth, the project was originally approved with the same number of lots, anticipating those lots will be built in the future. So at the time, when they did the environmental analysis, they took account for all of those future impacts that would occur. So as DR Horton is building just the same number of lots, they're not increasing the number of lots, they're not changing the layout, it's exactly the same as it was approved back in 2003.
But after that, could you...
Do the years has no impact on that?
No, there's not a, the environmental document doesn't necessarily expire. So there's no magic number that says after five years, your environmental document expires, so...
I mean, no traffic changes over time, yeah, there's...
And as long as the number of lots maintains and the layout stays the same, the impacts were already analyzed and identified.
Well, I'm kind of, just three general areas. First off, I am definitely, like I said, empathetic with, for the people that are going to be directly adjacent. I appreciate DR Horton looking at ways to mitigate that. Secondly, the Lot 48 is another general concern. I understand there's a lot of complications with that, and it should be nice if that could get worked out. It sure sounds like today's kind of the first time that there's been that discussion between the parties and whether it was Mr. Miller that had initiated that. It seems like that would be a good opportunity, or there is an opportunity to maybe, I mean, there was a public meeting, but the developer wasn't invited, I guess, or I'm not, that's not, it just seems like there is a lot of things that are not being clearly communicated and transparent between the interested parties. And the third thing for me is, I'm really excited about development and developers wanting to come in and build and create product and improve our community.
Absolutely.
Lord knows that we need it. So trying to find that balance, that little three-legged stool there is certainly a challenge. It seems like there would be, it seems like there's a couple more things that might be worth, worth, for lack of a better word, fleshing out, if you will, between the residents and the developer to get a little bit better understanding or a little better, you know, like just what was presented by the developer today in regards to the defense issue, is to really hear the concerns for the first time, really hearing these concerns, and maybe there's an opportunity to address some of those. And I would just present back to the, to staff and to DR Horton is, you know, if there's an interest in maybe giving a continuance in order to at least have that conversation and see if there's an opportunity for some further areas that would, that there can be some adjustments to make it more acceptable to the existing residents. But if there's, if there's not a, if it's a single family or a single story or nothing, then I, then I, you know, it's nothing in our guidance that says you have to build single, single-story, and it's completely up to the builder to build what they feel is marketable and makes the project. But we'd certainly want to be a good neighbor, both to the existing residents and to our community. So I would just present that as possibly an opportunity if there is an interest to continue and have that public meeting where there's some discussion between the developer, the property owner, and the residents.
Noted. Thank you. Jacob?
My biggest concern is there's some gray areas, and for two, the residents that come up that have a combined experience with planning of many, many years, and they're bringing up to, they're bringing up the city attorney in reference to Sequoia violations. Stephanie, are they, are we in Sequoia violations?
So there hasn't been any challenges to what has currently been in place since the original EIR and everything had been completed, so there was no need to further evaluate based off of that. And planning staff are already kind of took the hand on that, evaluated what they needed to. So in terms of that, you know, there hasn't been a challenge to it. It's still valid, like HP said, there's not a certain timeline, there's not anything that warranted an extra or substantial EIR at this point, so, or subsequent, I'm sorry. So I'm not sure if maybe there's other questions that HP can specifically answer about the study in particular, but overall...
I'm just concerned because we're dealing with literally a 25-foot issue, which is odd that we're dealing with such an odd, unique-sized lot that's owned by somebody else, and the fact that there's miscommunication between DR and the city planning and Petty who owns that lot, and there's no agreement there. I'm just concerned about later on, not necessarily at this moment, but later on down the years, of something that could impact the city later on illegally. And so I just, there are just a lot of gray areas with this particular project. Personally, single-story would be nice to keep everything uniform, but, you know, that's just my personal opinion. But I'm more worried about the legality aspect of that scenic highway, that Lot 48 with Petty. That's my concern that I'm addressing.
If I may, just to kind of, kind of guide what's happening right here, so what's before you is a site development review. When those are brought before a judge, what we look at is substantial evidence, and what it's based off is a substantial evidence test. When I say substantial evidence, it really is just would a rational person come to the same conclusion that the city did. The way that case law has always worked out, especially with a design review process, which naturally is more discretionary, we don't have objective standards in terms of your findings. If you look at what you need to do for a findings and for approval of this project tonight, it's, it is gray. It allows for that. It allows for an opinion of the planning commission. It allows for an opinion of planning staff to recommend something to planning commission. So just in review of that, you, I'm not sure if you have the findings in front of you, I have a copy if you would like to read them aloud, Chair, but we could go through them. That's really what your basis is on today, including every public comment, including the comments that were made by the applicant, but it really comes down to the planning commission's discretion. We've already made a recommendation as staff as to what we believe is appropriate. However, it really will rely on your interpretation of the code, and the court does give a lot of deference to the city's interpretation, especially with design review, so...
And I see that Mr. Petty wanted to speak again. Can I open the public hearing?
It's up to the commission, yes. But it was required...
I thought so. Public hearing, and if you guys don't mind, we'll hear from Mr. Petty again, and then anybody afterwards is fine.
Sure, appreciate the reopening of public hearing. I don't think anybody left, so I don't know if anybody's online, but I know Slaverton is correct about the nine houses. Again, I think this fence, I'm sure DR Horton, if you give malls, you give them what they want, they'll do whatever, whatever they want, whatever the neighbors want in terms of the fence, I guarantee they'll gladly give it to them. Again, this is in this direction. There, just for the record, yes, there are nine houses on the north side of the lots on, or Orange Grove Avenue, but there are 19 houses, 19 lots, that will have two-story product, very visible, on a six-foot grade differential. I think that needs to be pointed out to the commission. This whole thing is about compatibility, don't get sidetracked on this other, and the designers' review standards don't mean anything. It's the discretion of this commission whether this is a compatible project to the existing neighborhood.
Carol Kendrick, 5476 Nectar Avenue. Tiffany, I don't know if, and when you were looking at the lots as well, these are all three existing single-family homes that have wood fence. There are also wood fences along here. They are proposing a two-story home here. These are all two-story, they'll back up to the single-story as well, but there, I think there's more wood fencing that's of concern. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Welcome once again. Name and address, please.
30 Davis, Nadel, 5654 Nectar Avenue. I don't have a planning background. Again, I don't have all of the experience. I do not have a fence issue. I have a safety issue with regard to the traffic review. Our community has significantly changed since 2003, and I appreciate what Commissioner Laverne said about, you know, Florida Avenue, and we purchased homes with a vacant lot. We purchased homes in a phase, and then we experienced a housing crash. So we didn't purchase homes with vacant lots, we purchased homes with the thought that they would be developed like ours. And again, I'm not opposed to the project, it benefits all of us, every single one of us in here. It just needs to be compatible with our community. And DR Horton is a large builder in the nation, one of the largest. I'm sure that they can come up with a design plan that will match an arts and crafts neighborhood. And if it means they have less two-story, fine, that's not the issue. The issue is it doesn't match. Spanish, Tuscan, stucco does not match my community. Every single person that lives in those houses is gonna drive into my community. That traffic's gonna impact my streets, that traffic's gonna impact my children playing, my neighbors' children. And again, the public notice that was received, I understand, you know, DR Horton is commending staff, I have a copy of it. It does not have vital information. Nothing says it's two-story. Nothing tells them where to locate the staff report. You know, we're not all educated in planning. I'm in housing, but I'm certainly not in planning, and I know what makes sense. I'm not asking for this to be thrown out. I'm asking for the developer, this large developer, as he's said across the nation with this great reputation, to bring a house product that matches ours. You mean to tell me you're the largest developer in the nation, and you can't come up with a better fascia, a better floor plan, and not towering over my neighbors? Again, the fencing doesn't affect me. The only thing that affects me is the traffic, the safety, the things that I'm concerned about. Again, and you as a planning commission, approving 80 homes to be built and we don't have a fire station. And I sent pictures to the city with the fire hazards. They did a half-hearted attempt at removing some of the weeds so we aren't waiting for an accident to happen on Lake Street, but Lake is not the only issue. On Lincoln and Delicious, there's been accidents there. And I'm not even talking about that. We're two blocks from a school. We have a responsibility to our community to ensure the safety of our children. I mean, these are the things I'm concerned about. Yeah, I don't like the idea of the two-stories and possibly three two-story houses backing up to my neighbors, but the whole thing is an issue. And we could pick it apart for days, but it's really important, the safety, the uniformity. Infill housing should match the existing. Match, yes, even though city attorney said there's, you know, gray area there, but aesthetically, Spanish and Tuscan does not match arts and crafts, craftsmen-style homes. There are no two-stories, even if they do, maybe they need to be less, but they weren't ginormous homes, and I understand Willowak, but we don't have the reputation of Willowak. I mean, LA Times posted that as the gated ghetto. Our community is wanted. People ask all the time, like John Petty said, those houses were sold before they were built, and these houses would be too. That area of town is in demand. So again, I just task you with making a project that's reasonable and responsible to the members of the community. We are longtime members of the community. I don't care about the developer and all that, I care about my investment. I made it through the housing crisis. I made it through a horrible divorce and was a single mom and kept my house. I live in a nice neighborhood, and I don't want to walk away because a developer's coming in and ruining my neighborhood by putting houses that don't match. I want it developed, but I want it to match. And I'm pleading with you, if this was your neighborhood, what would you want? Think about that. If this was going to next year's...
You're running out of time.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, that's okay. Thank you very much, that's okay. One more, please, Mr. Boyd, Emery? I think one more, I don't know.
Thank you Commissioners for this opportunity to clarify, uh, a previous statement, I don't think anybody in the room questions whether or not MAP allows the number of units to be built, that is a certainty. However, this is a separate project, this is a new project, it has its own project number issued by the City of Hemet, therefore it makes it subject to review under the California Environmental Quality Act. The California Environmental Quality Act charges staff and your commission to review the project based on its own merits, its potential impacts on the community, the community's impacts on the project, and the cumulative impacts of this project and surrounding projects. The initial study that was prepared for the original MAP approval was prepared over seventeen years ago, the studies that were prepared, that supported that initial study and subsequent negative declaration, were prepared more than seventeen years ago in preparation of those environmental documents. A lot of development has happened on the Highway seventy-four east corridor since two thousand and three. Had these eighty units been built ten years ago, nobody would have questioned it, and we wouldn't be having this discussion today, but the reality of the matter is, those units were not built, and today you have differing conditions. The target intensity that I mentioned, which is stated in the land use element, that was part of General Plan twenty-thirty, which is adopted well after the original project and the original MAP was approved, that is a change that must be evaluated. The median along Highway seventy-four east is a change and must be evaluated in a traffic impact analysis. Unless staff can emphatically tell you today that Highway seventy-four east, fronting the project, and all of the neighborhood streets, intersections, and street segments within this development are currently operating at a service level C or better, then you cannot make a SEQA finding this evening, because it has not been evaluated, it has not been discussed in the staff report, therefore you do not know whether or not those street segments and those intersections are operating at level of service C. I'm not trying to stand in the way of this development, it just needs to be done properly, and it needs to be analyzed properly, not for myself, but for the citizens of Hemet. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your expertise. Anybody else from the public? Mr. Boyd?
Before you, on your, on your way up, I'm just, for clarity, um, or, we're not being asked to, to make a finding for SEQA, we're just, right, and that's, that's already been done, that's not part of this.
Thank you. Dan Boyd, again. Hi, Dan. So, uh, let me address the SEQA comment from my perspective, and I do appreciate the, uh, the gentleman here who was just speaking prior to me. This architectural approval is part of the original approved project, this is actually an extension, a logical extension of the previously approved project. The architectural approval in itself does not alter or change in any way the initial impact studied under the initial SEQA document. The initial project was fully evaluated based on the, uh, traffic impact standards at the time this project was approved. This project is not being changed in terms of number of lots, which otherwise could potentially change and alter those impacts. Um, the court recently found that architectural approvals, um, are a logical extension of a project development, and that it's not considered a separate project, and I have findings on that case, in fact, we were part of that case. So, I think staff is competent, I think staff has fully reviewed the SEQA portion along with the city attorney, and I think that the Commissioners should feel confident that there are no SEQA issues here at hand. But let's get to the meat of the issue, and I said earlier on in my presentation, that nobody walks away win-win, nobody gets everything they've asked for, so, the art of success, in my opinion, is compromise. And so, we really do need a determination for this project this evening. We own the project, we've got plans and, uh, plan check, and we're anxious to move the project forward, but obviously, we want to move it forward in, 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 in a fashion that addresses some of the concerns that we're hearing. And I think after all that we have heard tonight, um, the consistency, the compatibility, and all those kinds of things in terms of the architecture, um, I think I would have to rely on your staff recommendation, because they are the ones at the end of the day that are responsible to report to each of you to make that determination. So, while there may be some that disagree with that assessment, and others that don't, I think that's what you have your staff for, and that's why you have your standards. So I'm gonna speak again to the fencing, the fencing seems to be, at the end of the day, a real problem for folks to handle. So, I've already tendered a compromise, and let me further articulate it. I would agree to a condition of approval, and I would let the wording end up in the hands of the experts, but I would say that the applicant would agree to remove the existing cedar fencing in lieu of a replacement of the new funnel fencing on the property line, providing that the individual owner that impacts is responsible for any repairs to damage done during that course. I think that's a fair compromise, and that would include the entire cedar fence line. The second big item here is obviously, uh, the use of second stories up against the, um, common boundary, and I think, uh, Commissioner Leverton articulated it very well, that there is a substantial setback from the property line to the edge of the building, um, and I also would like to note that your maximum height for any building in the city is thirty-five feet, uh, the second-story home height that we have is approximately twenty-four feet, and the height of your existing single-story homes, our single-story homes are eighteen feet, so there's only about a delta of six feet. But having said that, um, I think there's another compromise I think we can work with, and again, I would, uh, outline the condition in terms of the compromise, referring to HP to fine tune it, but I believe the applicant, no, let me restate that, the applicant will agree to substitute, uh, the use of second-story product along the common boundary, and I can specify the lot numbers with single-story units. Um, that would include, right now, in track two-five-one-six-eight-dash-one, you've got a total of six lots, four already are single stories, so that would include two additional in that track, the yellow, and then where we abut the existing single story, we would substitute the second-story home with the single-story home. And we would, um, provision, uh, in that HP, that, and HP's got discretion up to twenty percent, that for every single story that we hit up on the, on that boundary, which is critical, that we have the flexibility to substitute an interior, um, single story for a two-story. So we try and keep the mix as close to possible, but the important part is, I would agree to that tonight. Those two compromises address the, the fencing, and would address the concerns expressed predominantly with the use of second story. And I'm gonna come back and visit, which we all will hate, Lot forty-eight. Lot forty-eight, and, and John, I'm sorry, um, I, I appreciate your comments, but I don't think they're workable for us. Um, this project has been reviewed for many months, and I think from the standpoint that Lot forty-eight is owned by Mr. Petty, in itself is a block to any further negotiations or any further resolution, because I've already stated clearly on the record, we can't step on someone else's property. That's the reason why staff, early on, attempted to acquire communication to get that property dedicated to the city, and Mr. Petty has his own account of the facts, and that's fine, I'm not gonna debate him in front of you, but the bottom line is, Lot forty-eight is not owned, or...